We're on. Good evening. Welcome to the meeting of the New Market Zoning Board. It's now 7:02. The members of public may attend the meeting in person at the Town Hall Auditorium or attend remotely using Zoom. If attending in person, please wear a mask and maintain social distance. If attending by telephone, the board will be using Zoom. Use the following information to join the meeting. H S colon backslash backslash zoom dot U S backslash J backslash nine five four oh one three three four four nine nine. Call this number one six four six five eight five five eight eight six five six, meeting code, meeting ID code nine five four oh one three four four nine. If you have any problems, call six oh three six five nine three six one seven, extension thirteen twenty one. With that, we're going to open the meeting. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to fight the United States of America into the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
With everyone's indulgence, we've got some minutes to review, but I'll put those off to the end of the meeting. Also, we've had one of the agenda items withdrawn by the applicant, and that was the appeal of an administrative decision made by Cheney Corporation. They've withdrawn that, so we're taking it off the agenda right now. And with that, we'll start with the public hearing for an application for a variance reference section thirty-two dash two thirty-four A and B special exception reference section thirty-two, two thirty-four accessory apartment to permit the addition of an accessory dwelling unit above an attached garage in a single-family home to be constructed, requested by Leo Manzo. The property is located at four thirty-five Wadley Falls Road, tax map R six lot four dash one, B three zone. With that, I'll turn the floor over to Leo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Leo Manzo, and I'm here this evening to present our request for a variance from section thirty-two dash two thirty-four A, the New Market Zoning Ordinance, to permit an accessory apartment in a single-family home in the B three zoning district, which does not allow single-family residential uses. The, shall I get into the criterion?
Have at it. It's your meeting right now.
There's two requests. Skip. Variance then special exception.
Well, we'll do the variance.
Okay. Doesn't matter which order. I have what you submitted before in your application if you need that.
For the special exception, yes.
Okay.
Yep. I'll stop. I'll just. So criterion number one on the variance, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. The public would have to be adversely affected in order for this application to be contrary to the public interest. By allowing an accessory apartment, an ADU, within the proposed single-family home, which was allowed by a variance granted on November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty, it would enhance the town's tax base. Building an accessory dwelling unit would help to increase and stabilize tax revenue to the town. It would not negatively affect the general public and the property owners, or property owners of the adjacent properties. Criteria number two, if the variance were granted, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed because the B three zoning ordinance was written in nineteen ninety-six to promote commercial development in what is known as the New Market Plains area of town along Route one fifty-two. Only two commercial uses have been developed in this zoning district in twenty-four years. As stated in the master plan, commercial areas promote and maintain an extended tax base. The proposed ADU will do the same by increasing the value of the property, thus generating tax revenue for the town. By granting this variance, this project would support the spirit of the zoning ordinance and not alter the character of the neighborhood. Criteria number three, granting the variance would do substantial justice because granting this variance would provide substantial justice to the property owner and the resident of the ADU by creating a secure and affordable housing arrangement in a tight market where reasonably priced housing is in high demand. Any loss to an individual as a result of the granting of this variance is by the benefit to the public at large. Criteria number four, if the variance were granted, the values of the surrounding properties would not be diminished. This proposed accessory apartment is a single-family home is consistent with the character of the neighborhood. A variance was granted to allow a single-family house on this lot in November two thousand and twenty. Three of the existing abutting properties are residential. Two are pre-existing non-conforming residential uses, and the third was allowed by variance. If a variance is granted for this ADU, the values of the surrounding properties would not be adversely affected in any way. Granting the variance would add value to adjacent properties and favorably affect the tax base. Criteria number five, unnecessary hardship. Owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship because no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application provision to the property because the purpose of the B three zoning district was to provide an opportunity for commercial enterprises and business to thrive, prosper, and grow. However, over the years, the type of development which has occurred on this section of Ash Swamp Road has been exclusively residential and bears no reasonable relationship between that what was envisioned when the zoning was enacted. Due to the absence of public water and sewer utilities, the availability of more accessible and suitable commercial sites elsewhere, and limitations based on, placed on truck traffic on Ash Swamp Road, the full development potential of this area has not been realized, which was placed, which has placed an unnecessary hardship on existing property owners who own land in the vicinity and have paid high taxes on the property at commercial rates. And item number two, the proposed use is a reasonable one because the proposed use is a reasonable one as it affords the homeowners of this lot to have the same opportunity to have an ADU in their home as others in New Market who own properties which are located in residential zoning districts as a way to more efficiently access space in their homes and to help to offset the cost of homeownership. B, explain how this criteria in sub-paragraph A are not established as unnecessary hardships will be deemed to exist if the only, and only if owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. The property cannot be reasonably used in strict conformance with the ordinance, and a variance is therefore necessary. To enable this property, this property has special conditions that distinguish it from others in the B three zone because it is entirely surrounded by other single-family residential uses which detract from its attractiveness as a commercial site. The unique shape of the lot does not particularly lend itself to a large-scale commercial development for which the zone intended. Therefore, the property cannot be used in strict conformance with the ordinance. While the lot does have a hundred and seventy-five feet of frontage, it cannot be utilized for access due to current restrictions on Ash Swamp Road, which significantly reduce the visibility, vi- excuse me, viability and marketability of this lot for any type of commercial use. Therefore, a variance is needed to enable reasonable use of the land. Yeah, I hadn't even looked yet. Take a moment to put it back in order.
Because it's a business zone, and residential uses are not allowed in the business zone.
We already gave them the residential.
Yeah, but this is for a new apartment on the property. It's expanding that residential use.
The second part of this is, excuse me, an application for a special exception.
One second, Leo. I forgot to mention, we only have four members on tonight. You're entitled to have five. I've got no problem if you want to continue, but it's entirely up to you.
We're here. Thank you. Application for special exception. The undersigned hereby request a special exception as provided in section thirty-two dash two thirty-four B, conditions one through eight of the New Market Zoning Ordinance. Explain how the proposal meets the special exception criteria as specified. Criteria number one, the accessory apartment shall be a minimum of three hundred square feet and a maximum of one thousand square feet of finished living area. So our accessory apartment will be seven hundred and twenty-eight square feet. That, that area is all contained above the attached two-car garage. The accessory apartment shall either be an efficiency apartment without a separate bedroom or a one-bedroom or two-bedroom apartment. Our offici- our apartment will be considered an efficiency apartment. There is not a separate room for, that would be petitioned off for one, one bedroom. It's all in one space except for the bathroom, and, but there is sufficient space to keep things well spaced out. But it is an efficiency, the technical part of, the technical answer to the term. Okay. One of the dwelling units must be own or occupied. The main house will be own or occupied, and they're right behind me. That's Gabrielle and Randy Minod. And accessory apartment, the, the efficiency apartment will be occupied by Randy's dad, Bob Minod. Number four, there shall be a minimum of two parking spaces for each dwelling unit. Parking space shall be defined as a rectangularous space nine feet by eighteen feet. Parking spaces shall be permitted within the setbacks if the location is over fifty, fifty feet from the abutting dwelling units. So we have two parking spaces located in the attached garage and two exterior spaces in the driveway. That, those spaces are shown on the, on the septic system, the site plan, which was approved by the state of New Hampshire, and would be certainly part of our application.
We have a copy of that in the, in the application.
It should be right in the package.
It is.
Thank you for sharing us with that.
Yeah, that's, that's this plan right here. Number five, no exterior, no exterior changes shall be made unless they maintain the aesthetic continuity of the accessory dwelling unit with the principal dwelling unit as a single-family dwelling. So no exterior changes are proposed through the plan that, that we've submitted, which is there in the package. And criterion number six, adequate water supply and sewage disposal shall be provided. If town water and sewer services, the site, tiny fees shall be paid. So we'll be doing an onsite well to be drilled, an onsite septic approved by the DES, number construction approval two oh two, one oh three, two six one three. And that's, that plan that we just looked at that shows the parking spaces. Number seven, granting the special exception would be consistent with section thirty-two As I now have a variance for lot, on lot four dash one in the B three zone to build a single-family home pursuant to RSA six seventy-four twenty-one Innovative Land Use Control, where a special exception for an ADU is, and whereas, whereas the B three does not allow for accessory dwelling units, come before the zoning board to gain approval for an ADU to be permitted as soon as, in the soon-to-be-built structure. Based my request on the following fact, the purpose of the B three district created under ordinance two, of two fourteen ninety-six and ordinance of seven dash two oh three under a purpose has not been met. In fact, only two houses in the past twenty, twenty years, only two uses, excuse me, in those past twenty years. The vision of the master plan does support quality, thoughtful development that preserves our natural resources and enhances the aesthetics of New Market while creating long-term tax base. Looking back at, in two thousand and ten, the zoning board approved the special exception for an accessory dwelling unit at four forty-three Wadley Falls Road in the B three zone. Zoning Board in two thousand and eighteen granted a variance for property underutilized in the B three zone located at three sixty-six Ash Swamp Road for a single-family residence to add to the long-term tax base as reflected in the master plan. In November two thousand and twenty, the board approved variance on lot four one for residential use. To grant approval by special exception to add an ADU to the residential use yet to be built in the structure is well within the intent and keeping with the master plan. Number eight, an interior door shall be provided between the principal dwelling unit and the accessory dwelling unit. However, it shall not be required to remain unlocked. Excuse me. The interior door between the principal dwelling unit and the accessory unit will be provided as shown in the attached plans. Those, our architectural plans do show that, that interior door on the, on the level one plan, which, I'd be happy to bring it up. Right at the top of the platform, right here, top of the platform. So this is garage space, outside door, up to the platform, then up to the apartment space.
Yep.
Right here at the platform.
You all set, Wayne? Did you look, did you get a chance to look at that on the plans? Yes.
I, happy to answer any questions that I can.
Okay. What I'm going to do at this point is I'm going to open it up to public comment for a reasonable period of time, and I'd like to make note that Michelle and Greg Whitcomb have written a letter dated April twenty-three in support of the project. They're unable to attend, but they're in favor of the project. It's going to go into the file.
Thank you.
Anyone want to speak for or against this proposal? All right. Seeing that there's no, I don't see anybody on Zoom looking to comment on this. So with that being said, I'm going to close the public input session, and I'd like to basically open it up to discussion amongst the board. I've got no problem discussing both of them together, but we'll vote on the variance first, and then we'll vote on the special exception afterwards. So anyone have any comments or questions for Leo? I think you did a good job, Leo. I think you answered everybody's questions, so that's a good thing.
But I thought, yeah, in the regard of who.
Correct. For, for the single-family house, this is for the additional dwelling.
Right. So this is, so the variance is approved, so we have to go back to this once again because the plan has changed.
It's, it's, it's an additional, no, it, it's an additional dwelling unit where only, where no dwelling, no, no single-family homes are allowed in this area.
Yep.
So we're adding one, so it's another, another layer.
And it, and it seems to me the explanation to give last time was somewhat repetitive and made sense at that time when it was approved.
I have no problem. I mean, the, the application is very thorough. Thank you, Leo. I've got no questions.
I have no questions.
You're muted.
I'm mute.
There we go. No, I'm all set. I, I have no questions.
Okay, then a motion on the variance is in order.
Make a motions that a variance be approved in section thirty-two dash two three four at the New Market Zoning Ordinance to permit an accessory, no, I'm reading the wrong one.
To allow variance.
It is the variance. Okay, to allow, yeah, yeah, to allow an accessory apartment, a single-family home in the B three zoning district, which does not allow single-family resident uses.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second? James seconded. With that, we've got a motion on the floor, so we'll do a roll call vote. James?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
And I give it an aye. We have granted the variance now, and I'd like to make note that we're going to use the application as our finding of fact. And on the special exception, I'm here to entertain a motion on that. It appears he's met all of the eight criteria, so based on the way the statute is written, we basically have to grant it, but let's have a vote on it. A, a motion?
Make a motion to special exception.
Special exception as written.
Okay. Al seconds?
Yep.
James?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So you've got four ayes. You've got your special exception.
Thank you.
Good luck.
All right. Thank you very much. I'd like to thank the board for their time and assistance, and thank the plan also. Thank you. Good night.
So we'll move on to the second item, which is there will be a public hearing for an application for special exception reference section two thirty-two, two thirty-four accessory apartments to permit a one-bedroom accessory apartment with five hundred and twenty-five square feet of finished living space in the basement of an existing single-family home requested by Lori Murray, property located at thirty-two Cedar Street, tax map U two lot one fifty-seven, R three zone. Lori, as I mentioned with Leo, we only have four members on the board tonight. You're entitled to have five. If you want to proceed, that's fine. If you want to wait till we try and get a fifth member on board, you're more than welcome. So it's your, your call.
I'm happy to go forward, please.
Thank you. So you have the floor, ma'am.
All right. All I can say is Leo is a tough act to follow. I'm new at this. So again, my name is Lori Murray. I'm the owner of the property at thirty-two Cedar Street. I filed a request for a special exemption for a one-bedroom accessory apartment in a single-family home. I will maintain residency in the primary living space of the property because the plans indicate that finished living space will be about five hundred and twenty-five square feet. It's in the corner of my basement. It's in a part that I don't use at all. On the exterior, exterior of the building will not be impacted in any way. I have ample parking space to accommodate an additional two vehicles. I have ample parking space to accommodate an additional two vehicles over and above what we already use on the property. I'll provide adequate water and sewer supply, and I am on the town system. I will have an interior door between the principal property and the accessory unit. It's not required to be locked, but it'll definitely be there. I know the abutters have all been notified. I'm not aware of any objections. And Mike Hoffman has actually come and reviewed the property. He inspected it, and he looked at the plans and said at the time that I had all safety and fire issues relating to it, he had no issues at the time.
Okay. Is that, okay? That's correct. With that being said, I'll open it up to public comment. If there's anyone out there in TV land, there's nobody left here in person, so out there, out there in TV land that wishes to comment on this, now is your opportunity. And I don't see anybody. What we can do is we can discuss it. Do you have any questions for Lori while we're waiting to see if anybody dials in or something at the last minute?
Seems very straightforward to me.
Wayne?
It looked fine to me.
Okay. I don't see anybody beating our doors down to comment, so I'll close the public input session and continue on with the member question period, if they've got any question or comments. If you don't have any, the motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve the accessory dwelling.
I need a second?
I second that.
Okay, James seconded that. With that being said, we'll do a roll call vote. James?
Aye.
Wayne? Okay, I hear an aye. I didn't hear an aye. I saw the aye.
Aye.
Al, we're good.
Aye.
Aye, so you have your four ayes. You have your special exception.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I hope you guys have a good night.
You as well now.
All right, thank you.
All right. We've already tabled the Cheney issue. Should we table?
We've tabled it. It's withdrawn.
It's withdrawn, so we don't need to take any further action on it. We do have a set of minutes to review. Has everybody had a chance to look at them?
I have.
Any comments, any corrections, any errors, omissions? Motion?
I didn't see anything, no.
Pardon?
Oh, sorry. I just said I didn't see anything, no.
Okay. Motion to accept is in order?
So, moved.
James moves. Second?
Second.
Okay, Al seconds. All those in favor, James?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Al? Al says aye, and I say aye also, so we've got, the minutes have been accepted as transmitted, so we're in business. Anybody have any new business to bring before the board?
Do we need to elect a new, not a new one, but do we have to go through the formality of an election at some point here?
Didn't we do that at a rolling meeting?
That was a couple of months ago.
We did when Chris resigned. I just don't know what, can you look into that for us, Diane? We'll take it up in the next.
I think every year you're supposed to appoint.
I know, but when does that?
At the official meeting, right after the town meeting is when that initially takes place.
Okay. That would be now?
That would be now.
All right. I guess motions are appropriate to elect a chairman and vice chairman.
I move to keep the existing chairman for another term.
Second.
Why do we tie it all together, existing chairman and vice chairman?
And vice chairman, yes.
I think that's a great idea.
That's a great idea.
We have a motion on the floor to keep the Board of Officers as it stands.
Yes.
With myself as chairman and Wayne as vice chairman, we have a motion and a second with Al.
I vote aye.
Wayne?
Uh, I don't know.
He hasn't agreed to.
Yeah, I vote aye.
Aye.
Al, I'm going to vote no, just to be contrary.
Which one?
Both. So, the ayes have it. The slate of officers is full for the upcoming year. Thank you very much for your service, gentlemen, and if there's no new business, we'll have a motion to adjourn.
I just have one reminder. The Office of State, excuse me, the Office of Strategic Initiatives is having their virtual conference on May 15, and I believe May 7 is the cutoff for registration. So, if you are interested in attending, we have funding to pay for your registration fee, and please get your registration fee in, and we can reimburse you for them. They won't give you travel charges because we will be doing it for a series.
All right.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
So, moved.
Second?
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.